What's up everybody? This is the poker coaching study session and today we're gonna be looking at. Playing twenty-five big blinds from early position. So it's gonna be a raise. Alright, uh, action. Yeah, okay, that was good. So what do you guys? Seems like a check to me.
A check, yeah.
Yeah, it might bet some, but it's gonna check mostly probably.
It's gonna be a check call, not really a check raise. Oh, it's betting something. Check, check. We check again. I think I would.
Yes, I don't think this is a good card for our range, so we're probably just gonna check again.
Yeah. It just folds.
Hmm. No, maybe.
That I call one.
Spades is bad, isn't it? Queen of spades is bad.
You know what I call one, Ken?
No, I don't.
I mean, this is a good look after this. They're polarizing exactly like ours. They have lots of mid pairs. They have that. They have. And then like what, what is that? That has like good draws. They have like, you know, queen deck. Jack nine coming in. So I'm not gonna be able to realize where you go with the best answer sometimes. If they're gonna keep game value by the better hands and both of us first team or playing.
Yeah, we're kind of in no man's land, right?
Yep.
You're, you're pretty, um, fuzzy today, by the way. Your mic, Tim.
Yeah, sorry.
So like ace king might still have to call, but I think ace can, queen can be, yeah, starting to fold. I don't think ace king ever folds, but, uh.
It's weird. Oh, geez.
Go back and look at the range. No pain sales constructed because you wanted to call there really bad.
Well, we just showed so much weakness with checking twice, right? He's gotta start bluffing his, his king highs, his queen highs, I think.
So when you're in spot, tough spots like this, it's usually your best offsuit hand will really wanna, like, it makes you wanna call that, which is the ace king. The other ones you can just start letting go.
Though that you would call ace king and not ace queen when they are essentially the same hand when he doesn't have ace king in his range because he would've bet it.
That's because you don't have to defend that much.
Right, it's just, it's just so you don't defend ace high too often.
Also, the queen blocks some bluffs, right?
Yeah, the queen does block some bluffs.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm making a small mistake. So I called. I wanted to continue with ace queen because we had the spade in our hand. Right? And the flop is the ten and the turn is the spade. I have the, the ace or the queen of spade. I'm like, if the spade complete, we can maybe bluff. Right? But if you look at the ace of spade, it's the one that holds the most.
Yeah, so go back to our, uh, go back to the turn when it's on us. Do we borrow the ace of spades and bluff ace, uh, spade rivers maybe? Are we betting the ace of spades more? Yeah.
We'll make them to wake up with the spades here in our time.
Not really. It's just too high up in range.
Yeah, as far as that's holding, we, we do want to be looking like you're a, is that included some pose? Those are the hands that don't figure values by calling.
I mean, it does make sense. We're just borrowing the stuff that's got like some equity. There's draws, straight draws and shit. Most draws.
Those, those are the.
I think it's also like. If you're, if you're here with thick, it's like all in a highlight that I've lost because you can see what's going to blow up some slots. You have two more streets. Good make pair, you know? The time we only have one more street make pair, kind of dicey.
Tho- those are the hands that in life, not in solver, I struggle with about going, why didn't I just bet out? Because I've just given him the pot for all of the hands that he goes, well, you checked twice. I'm taking it. It's like that. I literally look at it and I go, why bother to play?
Small, 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 teeny, teeny bad. One bit fine. Yeah, it's tough, Scotty.
Yeah.
You get into some weird leveling spots like. Like, well.
I fold.
Is he bluffing river now that I called turn?
Why do we, why do we all have sixty big lines?
I don't know.
It's a good depth.
Yeah, leave it.
Yeah, I don't know. We had it set on twenty-five.
He did, but yeah, just leave it. I said fold.
You scanned me, Ken.
Hmm?
You scanned me.
I said fold.
Did you? You said leave the hand, knowing it was gonna get caught.
Probably just jamming this, eh?
Jam. Yeah, I know LP's gonna do the ace two suited for sure.
Ice, we hold. Why are we back eighty? I thought we were twenty-five. This is rude.
I know, I know.
Don, GTO wizards, uh, doing some funny stuff this morning.
I know. Grabbing a proper e day.
We're not gonna let them. We're gonna fix it here. Well. A screen. I prefer to play a screen. Oh, no. Okay, yeah.
Probably just gonna check here.
Uh, we're gonna bet. So the further we are, I think, uh, Peter says this a lot is, uh, the further you are. Like, like, when you open all your position, the fur- further away the caller is, the more c bets you get. So I think this is gonna bet a decent amount. We got top, top here.
Yeah, I agree.
What size?
Their range, like, Ken. Just thirty-three percent. Uh, we're short, so, uh, it's like a low SPR and their range is gonna connect pretty well with this, so.
For sure. And check raising fine as well, obviously.
Yeah, I like to check race here. Especially if Philin's, uh, just gonna be stabbing quite a bit.
Okay, like he doesn't have sets of queens. He doesn't have the queens really or the jacks probably, so it's only got like sets of fives here, baby. So.
Yeah, probably a screen's gonna bet majority.
Not that much betting.
No, but the closer you get to the button, the more you're gonna check. So it's still a decent amount. It means forty-seven percent bet, c bet there. It's not nothing.
Yeah. It's a majority bet, thanks.
Yeah.
Oh, that's a big one.
Yeah, but.
Click on.
Twenty-five, you wanna make this a free game.
Just call, I think.
We could just call.
It's top pair, top kicker at this SPR. We never just.
It's not very vulnerable too much.
I would prefer to play like.
Get it all. Yeah. I, I think our only question here is how do we get it all in and lose all our money or get it all in and win all our money, but we're getting it all in.
Yeah.
So.
There's a lot of bad turns for us, honestly. But I'm still.
It is tough to defend our call down range, so it might be nice to throw this in there.
It just stops it.
Uh, all down range is gonna be like Jesus and.
Isn't it better to call down ace queen than aces? Well, I mean, all right, aces are less vulnerable, but. It's nice to block a queen, right?
What on the eight?
Not really. We would, we would love for him to have king, queen, ace. That's like exactly the kind of thing.
Nice.
Yeah, he's.
Okay, you know, that's fair. I'm thinking of the, we want him to have bluffs, but we can also have him valuing worse.
Right.
Because we jam there and he's, he's betting his jack. He's probably folding. But. Anytime he's got a queen, we're stacking him.
We're looking big. We've got so much hand. Can't go long.
Uh, I mean, you could borrow or chuck. I would chuck.
Man, that's a small blind.
I think this is often more of a big bet in the texture, right?
A pair and a flush draw here. I think, yeah, we're, we're gonna wanna start piling.
But well, but not like we don't really need to pile with a hand. I think the range.
A pair and a flush draw in my mind is always a bad spot.
Yeah, I mean, you're gonna play well, see, keep your free.
So there's one thing about paired, paired flush draw boards, which is so obvious, but I didn't realize it till like two days ago. Which is, um, he can have, if he has a better flush draw than you, he can't have a pair. And if he has a better pair than you, he can't have a flush draw.
Right, so when the money goes in, it's often counted fifty, fifty, three, five.
Yeah.
Which is fine, but we also need piles.
Check call.
Probably, uh, bet small here.
You wanna bet?
On a sideboard against button?
Yeah.
I don't, I think we're gonna check a lot. This is the kind of hand where we'd really love to see a threat to cheat.
If we bet small, then maybe he'll, he's most likely gonna call, right? So yeah, that tiny is pretty good, I guess.
I think the heuristic.
Just like the twenty percent.
I think the heuristic under the gun versus button, at least deeper stacked is, um, you check more ace high boards and bet more king high boards, I think. We could look at that if you want, LP, but I think that's kinda like.
Yeah, that's what I've always been. And buttons falling like every new day.
I would check most everything here in my, in my mind.
Like ace is the most, most of their defending range is going to be an ace, like I could have the most of those. So you could c bet king high boards more than a sideboards.
I believe it's, it's the, the two Broadway effect here because there's two Broadway cards. We just have more interaction with the top of the board than they do. They just have more junk, so. Just betting a lot.
Was it betting tiny?
Yeah.
Yeah, it makes the most sense because you can't check call. So the only way to see a cheap turn is to, to tiny bet.
So I have it backwards. Checking the king high boards the most, right? Embedding the a-side boards more?
No, the.
Uh, these are the more, the left checked boards.
Oh, so the least checked are the king high. Okay, I was right.
Yeah, but it'll also bet the king high the smallest.
Yeah.
It's, it's interesting to check king high a lot there because they're, uh, yeah, on fair hand that doesn't have a gut shot.
Can you? Because he doesn't have his king or kings, right?
Well, and he defends more aces. He's got all, like a lot of the suited aces in range. He's got a decent amount of offsuit aces in range and he, and he has less kings.
Okay, so kidding, a lot of very heavy on king, few aces. Then twenty percent checking now, still very heavy on kings. Kings, queens. Oh, start to see some aces now. And then. These things are like the low ones. Or are they? Flesh draw, very heavy on the flesh draw.
We're up to about fifty percent check.
And monotone. And now we're very mixing fifty, fifty. And now feel like there's a lot more aces.
Starting to see the pairs.
Ace eight five, ace king five, ace nine five. So you check a lot more aces type of board.
Well, the ace low, low for sure. Because we're not gonna really connect much at all.
Like this is the spot I think population gets absolutely backwards. Like they open on the gun and there's an ace on the board. Like I think they are think, oh, well, I got, uh, words better for me. I'm gonna, I think they weigh over c bet the a-cyclops. Just because the way their mind is constructed to thinking about this stuff. Like unsung.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
A lot of monotone. You base your checking range a lot on the suit. And then a side is not good, right? Followed.
Yeah, you might get to check raises. I guess not. We're too shallow for the backdoor flush, so.
Probably folding here.
It might, that falls.
Hundred percent full.
Need the spades.
So if you have king jack of hearts or king queen of hearts, you can get in the online here, but king nine without the straight, you're just gonna fold.
We fold this.
Yeah.
We fold this at sixty? Or do we raise? It's gone still.
Yeah, I think we, we really need the gut shot.
Need the space. No backdoor.
No, look at, oh, yeah, no backdoor.
Need extra equity.
Clearly. Just bet.
Yeah, I wanna bet here.
Just bet. No reason not, nothing about this board says.
That two.
Dirt? Yeah.
Or one, okay.
Yeah, but it's fine. All eyes.
Seven.
So seven, we don't have to go seven. That'll be fourteen, uh, twenty-two. I think.
Four point seven five or seven point two.
Seven point two might be good, actually.
Either one, yeah.
Point seven five brings it up to.
Be about a half pot jam if you went to seven.
Three, three?
Yeah, yeah, that works. That, 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 that gets us, that gets us all in also.
Either way, the SPR is so small that we can get it all in on the river either bet.
As you bet, right?
Yeah.
What a ridiculous.
I think we just stuff it.
I think this hand might go for that pod because, yeah, so, um.
Yep.
It's still comfortable seeing a river with the flip side.
And we can, yeah, and we can. And if he doesn't bet the river, we can.
Because of course we have, like, we have, uh, eight king without, like, it wasn't really against.
Yeah. And he has king seven, so there, there you go.
Such, such a dirty turn.
Uh.
Yep, it's an office, it's still bottom, right?
Just fold.
Easy fold. I'll fold ace jack. I'm actually in real life now. I'm even starting to follow these queen in them spots off.
I don't hate that.
Yep.
I don't, I don't mind that at all.
I've lost so much money with ace queen. Keep folding, kind of start folding it more.
We enable.
But that's.
Two, like our. Rainbow. Think it's pretty good, right?
Yeah, I think we got this.
Three fifty.
Range bet probably.
Appropriated.
On that ace king suited hand. Are any of us folding in real life to that ten big blind bet on the river when we don't hit the flush?
No, I'm not.
I'm not. But I mean, our little exploity things started saying we should do it more.
Yeah. I think we should.
Oh, but that was still. Was a one, it was a one quarter pot bet, right? So we have to defend.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not folding.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I'm gonna believe. I don't think I'm gonna be good very often, but the price is just such that if you fall, it's a disaster, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good card. We need to bet with.
Yeah, our ace king comes in. Yeah, bet.
The high card. Opening from a.
Yeah, he can't have the nuts here either. So, yeah, you, that's why you go big.
Ooh, la, 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 la. What are we gonna do?
Stuff it.
All of that, all of it.
Gonna put it in. I would give up.
I'm, I'm probably checking here.
He doesn't have, well, he, he doesn't, I guess he checks. I guess he can't have the nuts because the board paired.
Listen, we, we bet that we blasted the turn. We've been, we convinced them already. He continues.
So make the jack, I don't know, a nine.
He's got a boat.
That's what I'm saying. If the board didn't pair, I, I would bet we jam.
No, you already blasted it on.
Change the jack to a nine.
Yeah, I don't, I don't blast a nine.
It's a four liner. The nine is.
And I wouldn't blast a nine anyway. It's not a good card for imposition.
He can't have the nuts. I think we get the blast.
He can't have a king, a single.
Oh, oh, four, so it was a king high. I gotcha, gotcha. So make it some breaky then. It's like a eight. Or seven.
No, no, you already. You have to learn to let it go.
Humor me.
You have to learn to let it go.
I'm working on my river simplification strategy, toy game. Humor me. Make it so it's not a four liner. Uh, queen, ten, jack, brick, brick.
Let it go. Let it go. What do you wanna see?
Change the.
Change river.
Two, a five.
A five would be a convenient river.
Or six.
Or a six.
It's my river simplification. He can't have the nuts here. You jam.
Yep.
I don't know why ace seven doesn't, ace eight, ace nine, so I would definitely be overdoing it. But that's how you play this river when you only, are you the only one that can have the nuts? You pile.
We did pick up a pair on the river though with ace six.
Oh, right. Yeah, we gotta look at ace four.
Value betting.
But it's not, it's still not a value bet.
Yeah. But ace fours, ace four and ace three are the, uh.
Well, what's that bullshit, Ken?
What's that bullshit? It's the toy game. When you get to that river, we are the only person that can have the nuts. We have ace king. They don't. That's simple. But when the board paired, now they can have four houses. So that's no longer, we're not, now they can have nutted hands as well.
What if the guy in the big blinds got a B pivot sixty, zero, zero, zero?
I don't know what that means.
He, he just, he's just, he just calls. He never raises anything, so he's got such a strong, he can have such a, he can have the nuts on any board.
Well, if he's not gonna, I think most people find it all in there, twenty-five bigs with ace king, honestly.
Yeah. I wanna bet one big blind.
So just because he has, you have ace king and he doesn't.
Yep. Well, the nuts, that's because ace king is the, is the absolute nuts when the board, if the board didn't pair there.
Okay.
And he doesn't have it. In range. Oh, and see, okay, now I know why I bet the six. Cause it blocks, uh.
Two pair probably.
Sets.
Sets.
Can't river a set. Yeah, now the ace five and the ace four go nuts, but the ace six doesn't.
Like, I don't know how to change that part of the strategy, but I just know if we have the nuts, we get to go bad shit crazy. If, if they can't have it, we do. That's why I know.
But then what is the big blind calling with then? If the solver is going crazy? We have in the nuts. He's gonna have to call. He's gonna have to call this a medium.
It depends on the S, it depends on MDF. The, the machine's gonna call at that minimum defense. Uh, he's gonna have to call some hands that were beating, uh, one more value betting.
Awesome.
How can we didn't bet the spot?
We decided not to.
We are marginally made by definition.
We have a nut advantage and a range advantage.
We do have those things.
We can bet small here. And especially a double, double pair of ace. Right? Bet one. Just bet one, yeah. Paradise, you.
Yeah, fair board, okay, okay.
Hmm.
I think we have a lot further.
I think we're too short.
Time to fold.
Yeah, we can, we don't, we don't really have a viable way to through, which is not great.
That's true, right?
His bluffs have a ton of equity against us.
Have like that stuff and stuff. I'd love to have like clean hands if I was gonna deal with it.
Not necessarily, Scotty. He could do this with like threes and fours.
And he gets to.
True. Yeah.
Cause if he's willing to follow through with his threes and fours, we, we don't know if he is.
I mean, that's fair. We can't really withstand a turn bet.
Yep.
That's a question we call here and we check. And he blasts and we're in big trouble.
Here. We've lost, oh geez, I couldn't, so wrong.
I was pretty sure that the machine wanted to fold there too.
I don't know. We're betting so small too, right? Like he should be raising a lot. Threes got there.
This is low E V called in.
Now we fold.
Now we fold.
Sure. Okay.
All right, machine.
We're nonbelievers today.
The machine.
I stationed off, it's.
Everything, why?
The other day. Well, he, I don't know, he should, with our small bet, he's probably going to raise king, queen, you know, king ten.
Why does that, it doesn't work? I don't know.
It's, it's our strongest hand that, that unblocks all the bluffs.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Right? He's still loaded with queen ten, king ten, king, queen.
I still think we're probably calling here. We call a turn.
I'm never, I don't care. And machine calls.
Amazing. I love this hand so much.
Full, full, full.
I love it. And, and.
Showdown.
I'm a net.
Yeah, I mean, you need to be right one.
Oh, shocking.
Hey, that was. Oh, congratulations. We lost our entire tournament life.
I am really.
On that one too, like, this is a chippy V sim. If you hadn't made it, that low E V, that's definitely good to support there, right? Like, you cannot do that.
Uh, I got half of that, but I'm just agreeing with you.
I agree with you, Tim, and I got twenty percent.
If you folded at any point in the hand, Tim, I agree with you.
Twenty percent. Don't check. What are you checking for?
Uh, a range bet here.
Yeah, that boy, you're right. Damn it.
Two broadways. We've got back way. Back door, back door.
Yeah.
He nine.
What are the scenarios here? Is this ICM or is this chippy V?
Ah, it's chippy V.
Oh, okay.
Both flaps always chipping.
If you lost one of those nines in an ICM spot, that's even worse.
Yeah.
Do you bet here if you have one of the suits?
Uh, we probably would if we had backdoor flush.
Yeah, we got back.
On a pair of four.
And an overcard.
Oh, can I definitely found it? Got one here with the suit. So he wants us?
Yeah.
Um.
I'm folding.
I think we could just fold here because if we don't have.
We got, we got king, king ten might call. I mean, this might, but like, uh, queen, king, queen is gonna call. You got ace highs to defend with. You got pocket pairs to defend with. I'm out. I'm not raising.
I mean.
Hearts, diamonds.
Your hand off that raise button.
Just a fold, dude. Can't turn the nuts.
I think it's the same thing. If you had like the flush draws, you maybe.
Raise.
Yeah, open this up.
This looks like a.
Raise that hit with.
Open, thought, this looks like a fifty, fifty open up.
See if you can raise the king nine if you had suits.
Okay, I wanted to add.
Yeah, we saw it.
You can open, you, you can bet the king nine, but can you check raise the king nine?
Could you check raise it if you had, what was the top, if you had?
Why not?
See if you can do it with hearts.
I would do it. Why not?
Yeah, okay. Got to have the suit. Hearts and spades, very good.
This is after the check bet note? Yeah, okay.
It's high.
Bet small.
Ace side would probably.
Twenty percent is probably good.
Probably just.
Ooh.
Ooh, guys, big.
All the dollars.
Two broadways.
Yay. Fold this to a three bet deep.
Yes.
Uh, this will mix checking bet, I think. I've checked because I don't have a spade.
Yeah, this is, this is gonna be a really fuller spot. Backed in flush draw board. He's gonna have, uh, some really big sizing, but not with this hand.
Check call pretty comfortably. Bet king, queen, ace, queen. Some ten X might bet.
I'm betting a lot here.
Yeah, well, it's betting a lot.
I guess with, we are so shallow, right? Top. Pair here is pretty good.
Yeah.
With, with the backdoor straight.
Doesn't beat us. Maybe beats us, right? Maybe not. Doesn't matter, probably not.
Which is raising range here? King Jack, King nine?
I don't think so.
It's spades. Probably spades, he's.
King Queen.
Do raise back here? If you're continuing.
King, King Queen.
But the tens, the threes.
I think it's just all in.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, just, just jam.
He's polarized, right? So he's polarized here, his, his value hands are all ahead of us. Right? And his bluffs were beating, so I don't think we raised.
There's just so many.
Yeah, but we.
Bad turns.
Then we fold.
I mean, uh.
Yeah, it's gonna be hard to fold top pair, top kicker at the S, this SPR, or top pair. Which is why I want, it's probably gonna want to stuff it here.
You think?
Yeah, the solver is gonna stuff here. Pretty high.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Right? Cause the thing about his bluffs, he's got Jack nine, he's got spades. Right?
Maybe having the Jack is bad.
But Jack might be bad, yeah.
I'm going all in. Oh, calling.
Yeah, cause he's polarized, he's, first of all, he's raising this in position, right? So what value are we adding?
What do you do here now, Ken?
Well, done.
Easy, now you check call.
Check call.
There we go.
Now we lose two tens, now he's got trip tens.
Two?
Yeah.
No.
Oh, good job.
You got two with the king.
To the exploit.
Not a queen.
Look at this guy, he was gonna call me out.
Yeah, we've gotten this down.
Everything. But no, we have to call.
Got an interesting bluff there.
I'm surprised he didn't, uh, bet turn there. I guess the king's probably better for us.
Ooh.
It's a range bet.
Yeah, I don't know why you're checking from one of the gun versus big blind, it's two in a row.
It's the range bet big board, not small. It's a range bet big board, you have two cards.
And dynamic too.
A jack, why would I?
He's gonna call with all his tens and queens.
That you have two cards.
I have two cards. Look at this guy, we bluffed with the best end.
Yeah, I don't find a big bet there.
On range bet big boards, you range bet big.
I'm a scot. I just.
Stop looking at your cards. This is not a range bet big board.
Is this not, no, it's not, okay, okay, so we're gonna bet at that end, okay? We would bet even more with a jack, maybe we check.
This might be one of the hands we wanna check back.
Yeah, that's what I'm taking. Oh, another three fifty.
Check back or bet big.
Bet big.
Oh.
Okay.
Check, check.
Jack, jack. No Scotty, mucka, jack, jack.
I think we're still betting here.
Yeah, I'm gonna barrel.
Look at the, the, the bowl in the eyes and say, you shall not pass.
You checking back.
Check it back.
No.
All the river.
Check back river, yeah.
Forty percent. Oh, maybe then, maybe, maybe, okay, maybe.
Surrender.
I would check back and he's got a pair of nines.
I swear I was not gonna, but Ace of spades, I think it's the worst damn river in the, the whole back. Would there be anything worse?
Turn your jacks into a bluff, do it. Make the lock make sense.
Never, he hasn't. Ah, I was gonna attack him.
But he wasn't gonna, he wasn't gonna call, we barreled there with a nine.
This guy is a station, man, come on. He's everything. So it's easy.
Oh, oh.
What?
Bet small.
It's small.
I think it's gonna be a bet small because.
Twenty percent.
Mon, monotone.
Equity, everything is terrible.
Monotone boards, check.
You can check it, but you can bet small.
Bet real tiny.
Not a check.
I, I, I never find a big bet on the. Oh, I. Bleeding equity, straight equity, you got flush equity, like, I don't know. How to.
The cutoff should have more suited stuff than us, alright?
Yeah, I don't know how to construct this range.
Because we don't mind getting it all, we don't mind getting raised all in, we call it.
I guess we do have the best draw, right?
Yes. That's what it is.
That's probably what it is.
Yeah, because, I mean, we have a draw to the nuts. So.
Oh.
That's, that's disgusting. I, I hate this game.
And I guess we do have all the Ace King as well too, right? So. I'm, he should be through betting a lot of the Ace King or.
Just don't wanna turn this into a bluff.
Don't know what to do.
I'm checking.
I'm probably checking now.
Check call.
Know what to do, Jack. That four.
Highest TV, well, yeah, four, bet seven point seven and check is the highest TV.
I'll just call that.
So he's got to, no, so you guys gotta understand, he has the, um. Randomizer on. So the highest TV is bet seven point seven or check. But the randomizer made him bet. The double check mark is this. Right? So am I understanding how this works?
Yes, yes.
Yeah. We have.
Finally.
All the cookies.
You don't have the nuts.
Jam it anyway.
Bet, bet it.
Jam.
Two point five.
There's no shame.
Of course we jam. This is an all in all day.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure he just wants us to pile no matter what.
And he had the nut flush. Wow.
Get owned.
We scammed him hard.
Okay.
When that happens.
Ace three. Let's go.
He luckily kept our bluffs in.
Fifty four percent fold.
Oh, wow.
Cool.
Go.
Yeah, it's just a call. It's got a lot of dunks here, apparently. Ah.
Wanna continue, Ken?
Yeah.
I think I'm just gonna fold here. All in?
No folds. Geez, Ken.
Check.
Yeah.
Oh, you, you know he was up to no good.
Of course he's up so good. Supposed to be.
Here's China's come on.
Solver's up to no good, but in game, I don't know.
Jack for three point seven?
Better.
This is gonna be a thirty three percent. Or three point seven, I think it's gonna be a bet for sure here.
Uh, I bet you checks had the time.
Pretty sure.
Seventy percent?
So. You can barrel now, get some more aces, some bad aces to fold.
You can, it's also fine if you keep checking.
Yeah, so here's the thing, I'll do, but the second. The second pair, like, we checked flop, so we're gonna have a lot of tens now.
Yeah. Makes sense.
Those the opponents.
Yeah, but we got good equity still, and, um, like, we could get some more, say, we can get some shitty aces to fold, like the Ace two, Ace four, Ace five, Ace six, Ace seven. Yeah, unfortunate.
Oh.
We're out.
Now we call, we tip with that.
I ain't.
I, I think we still have to call here.
Yeah, I have to call.
With the open ender. It's an all in or fold, wow.
Bet.
Fifty five.
Bet. Okay.
I think it's bet small.
Yeah.
I mean, we bet, we, we like range by every high, high flop, right? So.
It likes the smaller sizings against big blind for.
It's very disconnected, so you keep.
Yeah, it's like as dry as it gets.
Yeah. Cause I mean, you're gonna just get him to fold with a larger bet, right? Thirty three percent.
Yeah.
We're not really getting any value here.
He might fall, he might start folding some of his worst twos, like, like, I don't know.
I mean, he's never folding a nine.
No. And he's gonna call, if we bet small enough, he's gonna call some of his twos, like, ten, uh, ten two suited, shit like that, if we bet small enough.
We can blood, bet bigger now, cause we don't block the continues of the spades. That's good.
Yeah, and we're just hoping that he has possibly backdoor speed draw.
Yeah, he doesn't have many better aces, so.
Let's bet.
I'm betting.
Bet, but we're not betting the river.
Five?
Uh.
Sure. But, uh, but they're small, it checks a lot, we're not.
Oh, checking. I'm wrong.
I wanted to change that.
You did.
Uh, checked. Now I just checked back, right?
Oh, my god.
Wow, come on.
He's supposed to dunk his flushes.
I guess then, if, when we do check back that turn, if he does have a queen, he might lead. Or he might call, thinking we don't have an ace.
Yeah.
Like he did, right? No, no, he had, did he have to? Oh.
We lost.
See, here's where I probably make a mistake, I wanna check. And I would check in game.
Dynamic board.
But it's probably a pair. I'm checking. That's a. Same EV basically, so not a big mistake. It's not a mistake, it's fine.
I guess we get value from Mars, right? He's gonna call all his sevens, he's gonna call with all his jacks.
He doesn't have jacks.
No, no, like a jack, like a jack in his hand or a seven in his hand, right?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Right?
Hey, so under them versus big blind. Bet everything. Ten percent checking. And then.
The highest check boards, it's gonna be those low connected flops, right?
Low connected flush draw board.
Stuff under a nine, eight high flops, I would say.
Right, especially we wanna get some protection, right? We're gonna have lots of.
Everything.
Jacks, queens, kings.
Can you go back to that, um, report? And just look where we start checking the most, is it eight high? Or seven?
Uh, you see them here. It's a seven high board with a flush draw.
Mostly seven, okay.
There are some eights.
Okay, there's plenty of eights, so good, so. Just know I can check a lot on eight high boards, I should know that. So much to think about, man.
Sure, three sounds good.
As long as you're betting, you're doing something good.
There's another spot, like, you can do anything, it's like, except check. And go on.
Probably bet any two here.
Yep. Three, three. Think this King high board, we're probably gonna be betting this one.
Are you out of position against a cut up? I don't know, we have a spade, so we can base our strategy on the spade a little bit, so with the spade, maybe we can bet a little bit more often. I would heavily check anyone.
Cause I thought the ace side boards were worse for us.
Ace, ace side is.
And the King highs were better, cause they were calling with all their suited aces.
Again, this fits the bill of like, it's not great to check call, but we don't wanna check fold. So betting small just kinda makes sense. In my brain. We wrap the king, we have a spade. We have an over.
I think, yeah, I think the backdoor three, backdoor four. You get closer with this eye.
Uh, we bet. Get this turn, it's a great turn, should we double barrel?
I don't really wanna double barrel there. He has something really close to flop a lot.
Okay, well, it's a great, right?
Hold on, free click. Do we double barrel with the ace of spades, or just, or can we barrel? Do we barrel at, at all with a single spade? I feel like we probably can. And if so, do we have to pick one over the other?
Probably gonna prefer the ace of spades.
This is pretty high up the range, but we could still get pairs to fold, like, you can get nines to fold, right?
The thing is, I just don't think it's the wrong to up to our range, but. You're right, it's pretty hard, I mean. You gotta compare it, fold.
Yeah, like.
Hold out lots of junk you're beating.
Yeah, like if he has tens and we just blast a spade on the river, like, he's done, right? If he doesn't start folding now, I don't know.
Yeah, maybe, maybe by river, but like, we have, look at like where the dogs are, there's a, there's, four has a draw, if he has a draw. We don't have to do that, but.
Alright, I say blast.
And blast is correct.
Blast.
Well, it's, it's a, a brick, yeah.
Yeah, can we look at the range? Do we have to have a spade to do this? And I think we do. Otherwise, we're just too high up in range to keep bluffing, I think.
Ah, we do.
Yeah.
You mean we?
Yeah, definitely.
I don't think that's the reason we need a spade. We need it so that we can bluff spade rivers.
I said that.
Exactly.
Well, you also said otherwise, we're too high up in range to be.
Right, so, cause we're not gonna bluff now without a spade, oh, okay, right, 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 that's true, right? Well, okay, so we don't have a spade, yeah, and it is too high up in range, it's both. But yeah, it's to bluff the river. Same, uh, same thought, but, uh.
Yeah, it's. Rep a creek.
Down creek without a paddle. I think we're just shoving it here, hopefully he folds his tens now.
Didn't get a spade, but. I don't know, man, I think we give up.
Yeah, probably just checking. You gonna show us your fuck tens?
Fucking owned.
Owned by the Jack nine suited, Jack nine suited. Went all in? Damn. Okay.
Of spades?
Yep.
Yes.
Babe?
I think this is a good one, we can check.
Nope.
No, no.
Bet everything.
It likes. This is, this is when I mess up.
I scam myself.
Yeah, so we just.
I missed this last candidate.
We just noted, we just noted, most of our checks are only coming on hi- eight high boards and lower for the vast majority of our checks. We just noted, we just noted, most of our checks are only coming on high, eight high boards and lower for the vast majority of our checks.
There's no checking, you just bet any two.
Hmm. You'll have checking here for sure, but you're blasting the wheel aces. The hearts at least, right?
I'd be surprised if we check any aces that have uh, any kind of draw, yeah, there's no.
Only nine percent.
He is, I mean, look, look at this.
It's a really small checking range. That's the.
Checking eleven percent?
We never checked.
Checked.
Just bet any two.
Yeah, because I mean, we have the range advantage, well, sort of, we have more queens than he does.
What is he doing?
Uh, clicking us?
Is it time for our, is it time for our exploit? To overfold to check raises?
I think so.
Here we go.
Five, three, wow.
This isn't even over folding.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's just a standard fold. Oh.
Looks like a bit big to me.
Uh, really? I, I thought it would be more of a check here.
Bet big, bet big.
The ten, ten's vulnerable, it might even go eighty-three.
So what did we just say, Greg, about under than versus big blind?
It's.
You don't check.
We don't.
You're not, you're not checking, okay, so.
So, this year, what do you do like if a spade comes? You're gonna be like, eh, but you're gonna be like, eh.
Be real sick, yeah.
So you gotta get your value while it's clean.
Got it.
And then this hand is kind of like, not gonna be the same hand by the river. Right?
Yeah, no, it's, it's gonna be a. It's blasting.
Blast and then you can check when a spade come, when an overcard come, and then you'll have.
Get bluffed on the river.
Then you get bluffing her.
On a break, you can keep rolling, or you do.
Two aces.
Do you always check a ten there when a spade comes off on the turn? Is it like pure check back?
Not here.
I wanna bet one point, I wanna bet one big blind.
Yeah, one point.
Under one point three, one point thirty.
In reality, I bet twenty-five percent here. Twenty.
Yeah. We gotta be betting any, everything though too, right? But.
Yuck.
Yuck, keep that.
I think we probably size up here.
Five.
Probably five point one five?
Don't, don't care the fish.
Teeny tiny.
Yeah.
Double jarl.
Yeah.
The jarl.
Nice.
Oh.
Are they that small again or just go all in?
Triple jarl.
Five and a half.
Triple jarl.
Jarl.
Well, we, we.
I love the triple jarl.
Stand here. Just wanna, you know. It's not.
That's why we, that's why we jarl. He's, he's, he's gonna jam and he's got ace three, watch.
He, this is a Peter exploit, the triple jarl.
Yeah.
But it, but his, his was in position though, right? We're out of position.
Yeah, the jarl's in, out of position.
Jarl's uh, in position play, oh, really?
Yes.
Oh.
Need a name for this one.
We're jarling out of position, what do you want from me?
I like it better out of position.
See?[1646.11]